Are recording.
Wonderful. Good evening, I'd like to welcome you and call to order the March ninth. Port Orchard City Council regular meeting and pursuant to the governor's stay home stays it's safe order. Our city council meetings continue to be held on Zoom. Link for this meeting has been provided to the public and call in options for people who wish to use their phones. So with that, would please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Randy, you have a flag for me? I have my other video turned off, so I bet it's over there. There we go. See your desktop. There we go. All right. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Right, we have a published agenda this evening is, are there any modifications that anyone would like to see to this evening's agenda? Councilmember Rosa Pepe.
Mr. Mayor, recommend approval of the agenda as presented.
A motion by Councilmember Rosa Pepe, a second by Councilmember Dina to approve the agenda as presented. Further discussion of this evening's agenda. Hearing none, all in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye. Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the agenda has been set. We are to our first citizen comment period, and this is for any items on this evening's agenda. Brandy, do we have any members of the public in attendance this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we have four.
Okay, or is, is any raise, please reuse the raise your hand feature if you can. If you would like to be acknowledged for an item on this evening's agenda. Alright, last call for citizen comments, but there's a second citizen comment period at the end of the meeting. So anyone raise their hand, Brandy?
No, they have not.
Alright, I will close the first citizen comment period. We have a published consent agenda. So anyone wishing to make a motion, Councilmember Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
The motion and by Councilmember Deener, a second by Councilmember Clausen to approve the consent agenda as presented. For the, any discussion of the consent agenda. Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye. Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda has been approved. We are now, we have no presentations or public hearings, but we are going to have a 10 minute, I would think, 10 minute purely, is that enough?
Five minutes is probably fine.
Five minutes, she's optimistic. I've never had a five minute executive session, let's, let's try that. So I'll let you go ahead and state the nature and cite the RCW if you could, Ms. Arch.
Yeah, absolutely. So we will be entering into an executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty-one ten, sub part one, sub part I, to discuss with legal counsel, the legal risks of a proposed action, the agency has identified associated legal risks with action likely to follow.
Okay. So Brandy, we're going to stop the live streaming and get our other staff members to excuse themselves, and as soon as we do, we'll start the clock.
Okay, it'll be just a minute, I'll let you know when we're ready.
Mr. Rose Pepe, you got a good joke while we're waiting?
None that I'd like to tell here.
Okay. Since the recording's still on. See, we're up to.
Alright, we're good to go.
Okay, I don't see the Facebook, Facebook Live yet.
That'll take just a minute, we gotta relog back in.
Okay. Give that just a moment. The function of going to executive session and back out took longer than the executive session. But I guess in the council chambers, we all had to get up and go to the back room and.
At least in that case, we got some exercise.
True. It's getting, getting close.
It's still, still trying to get on there.
We're recording, do you guys want to proceed without the Facebook feed? Okay, I'm seeing heads nod, right? We'll catch up with us when we, when we get there. Alright, we have returned from our executive session and we are now to our business items for this evening, and the first is item A, adoption of an ordinance, adopting the twenty twenty-one periodic update to the city shoreline master program. Mr. Bond.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of council. The city adopted its shoreline master program via ordinance number zero zero five dash thirteen in twenty thirteen, and has amended it periodically since adoption. The city has prepared a required update to the two thousand thirteen shoreline master program according to the periodic update timeline and requirements of the Washington State Department of Ecology and the Shoreline Management Act. The city is required to review and adopt updates to the shoreline master program every eight years with final approval by the Department of Ecology. In accordance with the required procedures, the city engaged in public outreach consistent with WAC one seventy-three twenty-six zero nine zero. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on the SMP revisions on February second, two thousand twenty-one, and voted to recommend approval to the city council. The Land Use Committee reviewed the shoreline master program revisions at its meeting of February tenth, two thousand twenty-one, and the full council reviewed the SMP revisions at the February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one work-study meeting. Staff was directed to bring an ordinance to the council for adoption of the amendments at the March ninth council meeting. Now, since, since we printed the packet on Friday, late on Friday afternoon, we did receive a couple of additional comments from the Department of Fish and Wildlife, and so earlier today, we sent out an email that included a packet of proposed revisions. The first three pages of that packet included a matrix that listed the comments from the Department of Fish and Wildlife and a series of very minor changes to the shoreline master program. If you have any questions about these specific changes, I'm happy to answer them, or if you'd like me to go through them one by one. Carrie Salie from our, the Department of Community Development is here and can speak to those, and we would just have to let her into the meeting. So if you'd like to know more about the minor corrections that were proposed, we can go over those. Otherwise, the recommendation is to approve the shoreline master program as amended in the most recent version sent to you this afternoon. Thank you.
What's your preference? You have questions on the amendments? Would you like Carrie to go through them one at a time?
I thought it was pretty straightforward when I read through it today, so I didn't, I don't really see a need for it, what others do.
Councilmember Chardy nodding his head up and down, Councilmember Deener's raising his hand. Do you have a question?
I'm just gonna make the motion, then we can talk more.
Okay.
Alright. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance, amending ordinance number oh five dash thirteen and the two thousand thirteen shoreline master program by adopting the twenty twenty-one periodic update.
Second.
Second.
Okay, the motion by Councilmember Deener, a second by Councilmember Kuchardi. Discussion, and as we heard earlier, there were some minor amendments asked of us by Fish and Wildlife, and there was proposed edits for chain sent out today, and you, those are being proposed to be included in the plan that you voted on this evening. Councilmember Rose Pepe, have a question?
No, more of a comment, and I know, just echoing for the, some of other council members who have said this. Thanks to Nick and Carrie and staff for getting this done. This is definitely a laborer. Hopefully love to get it completed, but thank you all.
Councilmember Deener?
Are these the only comments that we received from the Department of Fish and Wildlife?
Yes. I believe this was the only comment on the SMP. We also received comments within the last week on the downtown master plan that sort of overlapped with the shoreline master program, but they were related more to that project.
Well, I just want to say that, that's a, that's a testament to how well this was done. For Fish and Wildlife to have such relatively minor comments is very impressive, so, good job.
Councilmember Ashby?
Yes, for the public that's watching, I would, I just want to note that the shoreline master plan was reviewed in depth by the city council at our last work-study session. So if it seems like we're not putting a lot of attention to it today, we have devoted a lot of time to this over the last few meetings.
And it also went to Land Use Committee as well.
And it had a public hearing at our planning commission.
So it's been touched multiple places. Alright, with that, further questions, comments?
Good job again, ahead of schedule, nice.
Yes, good work. So if you're voting on the adoption of our two thousand twenty-one periodic update to the city's shoreline master plan, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance has been approved. We're to item B, adoption of an ordinance, reclassifying the property located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Harold Drive, southeast and southeast Lund Avenue from residential two to residential three. Mr. Bond?
Yes, thank you. The city received an application for a site-specific rezone for the unaddressed property located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Harold Drive, southeast and Lund Avenue, identified as assessor parcel number four six two five zero 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 nine zero two zero six, to change the zoning designation from R two to R three. The Port Orchard Hearing Examiner held a public hearing consistent with the requirements of POMC twenty point twenty-two zero six zero on January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, and issued a recommendation to approve the rezone for consideration by the city council on February tenth, two thousand twenty-one. The proposed rezon will grant the property development rights associated with the residential three zoning designation, but future development of the property is subject to additional permitting requirements. Staff recommendation is to approve an ordinance granting the approval of a site-specific rezon from residential two to residential three. Thank you.
Is there a motion? Councilmember Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance granting approval of the site-specific rezon from residential two to residential three for the property located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Harold Drive, southeast, identified as parcel, assessor parcel number four six two five dash zero 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 dash zero zero nine dash zero two zero six.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Deener, a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. So further discussion or questions of Mr. Bond?
If you'd like, I can share my screen and show a map of the, the property and where, where it is located.
Thank you.
So the, this is the intersection of Lund and Bethel at the bottom right of my screen, and the parcel that is being rezoned is highlighted in green outline here, and the properties immediately north of this are also already zoned R three. So this, this one little piece of property is going to have the same zoning designation as the areas to the north. And Harold Avenue, you can see that it doesn't currently connect to Lund Avenue, but that is dedicated right-of-way that could be improved in the future.
Right, we have a motion and a second. The questions of Mr. Bond? Okay, hearing none, you'd be voting on the rezon application in reclassification of the property at Harold Drive, southeast and southeast Lund Avenue from residential two to residential three. All in favor, please say aye. Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the rezon has been approved. We're to item C, adoption of an ordinance, accepting a grant with the Association of Washington Cities for the purchase and installation of new evidence lockers for the police department. Chief Brown, this is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. On February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one, the city of Port Orchard was awarded a loss prevention grant of ten thousand dollars from the Association of Washington Cities. Grant funding is specifically to partially fund the purchase and installation of new evidence lockers for the police department. Grant does not require matching funds. The purchase and installation of the project must be completed and supporting documents submitted to AWC prior to August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. The total cost of the project is twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and ten dollars excluding city staff time. This project was included in the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget for the police department in full, but with the anticipation of receiving the AWC grant. The city's practice is to accept grants by ordinance. So staff recommends that the city council adopt an ordinance, thereby approving the acceptance of a grant from the Association of Washington Cities in the amount of ten thousand dollars to partially fund the purchase and installation of new evidence lockers for the police department.
Councilmember Kuchardi?
I move to adopt an ordinance thereby approving the acceptance of a grant from the Association of Washington Cities in the amount of ten thousand dollars to partially fund the purchase and installation of new evidence lockers for the police department.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kuchardi, a second by Councilmember Lucarelli. Thank you. Questions for Chief Brown? So these lockers were funded in our current biennial budget, and this grant will help offset part of that cost. Yes. Alright, hearing no questions, you'd be voting on the exceptions of a grant with the Association of Washington Cities for the purchase and installation of the new evidence lockers in the police department. All in favor, please say aye. Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the grant has been approved. We're on to item D, adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Pacific Northwest Guard Rail Services Company for the Old Clifton and Tracy Avenue guard rail removal and replacement. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. By this resolution, the city council would authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Pacific Northwest Guard Rail Services Company for the Old Clifton and the Tracy Avenue Guard Rail Removal and Replacement Project. On January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, the city established a list of qualified contractors from the two thousand twenty-one MRSC Small Works roster for main category roadway construction, repair and maintenance, and subcategory guard rail installation to perform the Old Clifton Road and Tracy Avenue Guard Rail Removal and Replacement. A copy of that list of qualified contractors is attached to resolution as exhibit A. On January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, in pursuit to resolution number zero one nine dash one seven, which is our bid procedures, the city's Public Works Department emailed a request for proposal for the Old Clifton Guard Rail Removal and Tracy, replacement to three qualified contractors on that list. Three bids were timely received. Pacific Northwest Guard Rail Services was deemed and presumed the low bidder. The bid included a mathematical error on the scheduled contract prices and had no impact on the outcome of the bid award. Staff corrected the error upon advice from legal counsel, and after correcting the error, Pacific Northwest Guard Rail Services Company remained the low bidder. Final bid amounts are as follows. Pacific at fifty-one, six fifty-seven, Peterson Brothers at fifty-four, nine sixty-three, and Coral at seventy-two, eight forty-one. On February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, the Public Works Department staff completed the MRSC mandatory bidder responsibility checklist and determined that Pacific Northwest Guard Rail Services Company bid of fifty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars was the lowest qualified bid. Public Works Department has confirmed that the bidding procedures for the public works have been followed. Staff recommends that the city council adopt resolution zero one nine dash two one, authorizing the mayor to execute contractors, contract number C zero three four dash two one with Pacific Northwest Guard Rail Services for the Old Clifton Road and Tracy Avenue Guard Rail Removal and Replacement contract in the amount of fifty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And please note that we have forty thousand dollars in the budget, but we are going to be receiving insurance money as both of these were, I think, one or both were damaged and has an insurance claim.
The Old Clifton one does, I, I know, but I'm not sure about the Tracy Avenue one. Is there a motion? Or? Councilmember Ashby?
I move to adopt resolution number zero one nine dash two one, authorizing the mayor to execute contract number C zero three four dash two one with Pacific Northwest Guard Rail Services Company for the Old Clifton Road and Tracy Avenue Guard Rail Removal and Replacement in an amount not to exceed fifty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Ashby, and a second by Councilmember Deener. Are there any questions of Mr. Dorsey about this guard rail? Councilmember Lucarelli?
I just want to say that at first read, it sounds like one project, and if it had just both the added or the to the Tracy Avenue, it would be clearer. It's two projects.
It is two projects, you're correct. Yeah.
Old Clifton and Tracy.
You'll be looking for a long time.
Just saying. That's how it's written. It's just a little picky thing.
Alright, any other good, good comment and other questions? Alright, you'd be voting on the Old Clifton Road and Tracy Avenue Guard Rail Removal and Replacements. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the contract has been approved. We're to our last order, business item, which is the approval of the February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one city council work-study meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the work-study meeting minutes of February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Deener, a second by Councilmember Lucarelli to approve the work-study minutes of February sixteenth. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And Councilmember Kuchardi, are you abstaining?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, alright. So the work-study minutes are approved. We have two discussion items tonight. First is Mr. Bond with the annual impact, annual, annual report for impact fees. You're gonna share your screen or just speak to this issue?
I am just going to speak to this issue. So the municipal code under our impact fee ordinance requires that we annually report to the city council on impact fee revenue and expenditures, and so Noah and I with our staff annually put together a report for you that outlines how much money was collected, how much money was spent, and generally documents that we are being good stewards of these impact fee revenues, and that we are spending them within the required timelines, which is ten years from the date that they are received. We have to spend them on an eligible project. So the, the memo that is in your packet includes a breakdown of the park impact fee revenue and expenditures for two thousand twenty, and it, it also shows backwards a couple of years. So you can compare how revenue has come in. In two thousand twenty, we received a hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars in park impact fee revenue, and we spent forty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars on parks projects. For traffic impact fees, things are a little complicated, and they will be a little complicated for at least one more year until we have fully integrated the McCormick Woods Impact Fee and the citywide impact fee program. So these had been accounted for separately until March, or until about two weeks ago, and going forward, they will now be commingled, and you will just see one traffic impact fee account for the city after the end of this year. So in two thousand twenty-four, traffic impact fees, we collected four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, five hundred and forty, four hundred and ninety-eight, five forty-four was our revenue, and we spent two hundred and fifty-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars for the McCormick Woods transportation impact fees, we collected two hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars, and we spent forty-seven thousand three hundred and ten on projects. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to take those. Otherwise, this is just information for us to file away in our record.
Alright, questions for Mr. Bond? Okay, hearing none, we'll get on to our second discussion item, which is water capital facility charges. Mr. Dorsey, this one's yours.
Yeah, and so, Brandy, do you want to bring up this utility program, or I can share my screen, I think, and?
It's already in the packet, Mark, your, your.
Okay, so.
It's on page two twenty-seven of the packet.
You don't need the public to see it? It's up to you.
It's up to the council, it's their meeting, but it was in the published packet.
Okay, they should see it.
Okay, alright, so if Janine could, or Brandy could put up page two twenty-seven of the packet.
Well. I think I can. Can you see my screen?
I think. Yes.
And do you see the utility apartment program?
Yes.
Okay, so, utility committee, we went over this in more depth. This is a living document that really encapsulates everything that we're doing in the utility program with sewer capital facility charges, sewer credits, storm plan, our general sewer plan amendment, and, you know, water rate. So you can see that we have this general plan of things that have been accomplished during green, things that are in red are still pending, and so I'm highlighting the water capital improvement plan, water capital facility charges, that's the discussion tonight. And so this is more of just an introductory on where we're at, which we're gonna talk about this briefly tonight. We do have a draft, a water CFC based on the current capital improvement plan that's in the water system plan that's been submitted to the Department of Health. So because as you can see below, that system plan isn't anticipated to be improved and proven till this fall, which is a year, instead of the six months, which is the normal turnaround. We've confirmed that we can proceed with the process of based on the CIPs that are in the water system plan. We have selected Katie Isaacson to give us a proposal that will include verifying, verifying water CIPs, updating the capital facility charges, and then she's also gonna include water and sewer rates, which is a discussion that will happen more this spring and summer. So focusing just on the CIPs, that will be her first task.
So Mark, you keep, you were using an acronym that the general public is not, capital improvement plan is what a CIP is.
Alright, I think I said that earlier. So as we move through, it'll will do, it'll follow the same process as we did for the sewer CFC, where we'll go through an adoption process, and then, and you can see the timeline based on that through municipal code update, city adoption, and then the comp plan application that we have to get in so that then we can adopt that this year into Nick's comprehensive plan in two thousand twenty-one. So that's just generally, you know, where we're going on this, so I guess if there's any questions, I can answer those, or Noah or Nick.
So, and, 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 and a what we're gonna do is, two weeks from now, Katie Isaacson's contract, we've brought forward for your approval. The first body of work she will do is to validate the capital improvement plan that we have so that we can first move. So that we can first move forward with increased capital facilities charges based on that capital improvement plan. Later this year, we're going to talk about water and sewer rates. And then our goal is to have an approved plan by the Department of Health late in this year. So we're just wanting to lay those timelines out to you so as you're going to see a contract here in two weeks. And then ahead of water rates and the approved plan will be working on that capital improvement plan first. Everybody grasping what we're doing, okay? Sounds good. All right.
Mr. Mayor, just an observation, you have a consultant contract underwater sewer rates as today.
It didn't happen today. I think that was wishful thinking. We've been working on it for a month or so, so, but thank you for pointing that out. We are done with discussion items and now we're going to go into our council committee reports. The economic development tourism, I don't believe you met here this month.
Correct, next meeting April twelfth.
Yep, that's what I'm seeing. Utilities, you met tonight and you got a report for us, Councilmember Lucarelli?
Well, we just actually worked, looked at the utility department program outline and that was a big part of it. We did talk about various updates and a lot of them had to do with financing for the various projects. The splash pad has had been discussed and it looks like we'll be having that completed in by the fall. Just about the time when we think that there will be a lifting on some of the COVID restrictions. So we're hoping that people can enjoy the splash pad in August or September of this year. We are also talking about. Let's see, the foster pilot project, which we all know is very complicated and hoping that we get some good results in that. We're looking for at our water rights. And a lot of that is all tied up with that particular project. Jackie's been working very hard on that. And pretty much the Sydney repair that we've all been looking at and concerned about. Should be started and worked on very soon. We're looking for some bids for. On that project and we're hoping to be working on that within the next several weeks. The next meeting that we're going to be having is April thirteenth.
Let's see here, land use, have you met?
No, we were going to meet tomorrow, but we didn't have any agenda items. So our next meeting is April fourteenth.
Okay. Festival of Chimes and Lights.
We'll be meeting next week.
Let's see here, finance hasn't met, they'll they'll meet next Tuesday, I believe, and. Yes, yeah, on Zoom. And transportation committee, I don't believe you've met since our last, you gave a report at the last council meeting. And you'll be meeting on March twenty third. Lodging tax, I don't believe you've met.
No, we haven't met and in discussion with Brandy, we're, you know, we had hoped for some more guidance coming out for our next phase. But it seems like everything is getting kicked down, canned down the road a little bit, so. I I think as far as festivals are coming for this summer, you know, we need to have that discussion with the committee here fairly soon. I I don't think we'll be authorizing any additional funds. More to follow.
As sewer advisory committee met.
No, we haven't, but I do think we need to get a date on the calendar.
Right. And we have set a date of April twenty third for the county, city council retreat. Joy, I think Juleson is her last name. From Triangle Associates is our facilitator. I've seen the contract. I'm not sure that we've executed it yet, but that'll happen in the next few days. And we're working on an agenda. I know council member Ashby has sent me. A couple of topics that we've incorporated in and I encourage others to send. Topics too. So we've got about an hour and a half for those. Big picture, goal setting, policy type discussions carved out for for you council members, so. All right, and let's see here, outside agencies, Councilor Ashby, I've got a couple if you want to.
Yeah, we had, the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council had a retreat last Thursday. And the retreat focused on adding an equity component to the countywide planning policies. Which are currently being updated and it was successful again. Our facilitator was Sophie Glass from Triangle Associates and Sophie and her team. Did a very commendable job and there was a lot of good dialogue. KRCC board is not meeting again until May, but in the meantime, there are some committees that are. Doing their work and primarily focusing right now on the updated that countywide planning policies. I will go on to the Puget Sound Regional Coordinating Council's Transportation. Policy Board and I believe they invite members from any of the PSRC boards. Will be starting in April, the federal funding project selection task force for the next cycle. And representing Kitsap will be myself, Commissioner Gelder. And Mayor of Paulsville, Becky Erickson. John, are you representing Kitsap Transit or is Becky doing that?
Becky is doing that.
She's doing that, okay, so. Yeah, so we will be working hard to make sure that Kitsap gets its fair share of federal funding to disperse. In our countywide projects. So those are the reports I have, the Peninsula RPTO again is not meeting until April. So we'll have more later. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Beck. Let's see here, some of my outside agents, I'll just tackle all of mine in order in my mayor's report. I've got a number of outside agencies. So I just jumped right into the mayor's report. On the community center, I I received the appraisal. The bank's building appraised for significantly more than I thought it would and. So right now the ball's in the bank's court. I don't believe we can. Pay what the appraised value is for a building that we intend to tear down. So we're in discussions. With that, I've talked to the bank a couple of times about that. I know that Nick and I have the number for the, we talked about the scope. For the frontage improvements and utility locations for Bay Street, you know, because we have. The the sea level rise report and we know that that. Basically, two or three block area, Bay Street needs to be raised a foot or so. And the scope on that's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and I know that any project, whether it's the community center, this master plan project. Or not, that body of work's going to need to be done, but I just can't in good in good conscience ask you to to approve a contract for that. Until we get a little farther in the negotiations with the bank, Councilor Ashby.
Yeah, I have a question on that and I'm hoping that Nick has now put up his his picture, so, well, there he is. Because that's a state highway, do we include the state on any planning down there?
Yes, absolutely. We would notify the state that we're intending to to design an improvement on a state facility. And so there's a process that you follow as you coordinate that design.
Thank you.
Other questions on that project or topic, Councilmember Cuthbert?
I just want to say thank you for just all of your diligence and details on this, right? We are in the midst of a feasibility study. All of this is very, very relevant, so I thank you for continuing to keep us all up to date and all of these moving parts.
And there are a few moves and moving parts, but thank you, I appreciate that. All right, Public Health Board, I check that COVID data just about daily and it seems like it's about one percent. A day that the people, number of people getting vaccinated jumped up a little more than that today. So as of today. Twenty nine percent of Kitsap County's been vaccinated and so that's really positive news. And I saw where the CDC had a recommendation, if you're gathering with a group of people and you've all been vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask, so. All the more reason to get vaccinated, I guess. So transit, if you had, didn't see the press release that went out today, passenger only service from Southworth will start. On March twenty ninth, so that's an exciting day. And at the transit board's last board meeting, the. Board authorized the executive director to start negotiations on property. For the SR sixteen park and ride lot at Ruby Creek, so I'm sure John in in this last week has got all those properties purchased. All right, PSRC, I I'm on the executive board there and probably, there was a number of items on the agenda. But the biggest discussion was the annual budget and the budget that was brought forward called for. Two percent increases in dues in twenty twenty two and four percent in twenty twenty three. To fund, they have a policy related to their reserves and we're only at ninety percent of their reserves right now. And there was significant pushback from the member cities there. When more than half the cities in the Puget Sound region are using their reserves to fund their operations. And keep their staff employed. They didn't feel it would be appropriate to be funding the reserves on an organization that they belong to, so. We have the annual meeting coming up next month and I know how I'll be voting if there aren't changes to the budget. And I guess I shouldn't say I know how I'll be voting, I I I need to represent all of you, so if you have. I I don't believe we should be funding those reserves either. We can make a policy decision to suspend the reserve. Requirements, yes, we want our adequate reserves, but. Many of our cities in our state are hurting at this time, so. Beck talked about the KRCC retreat about race inequity and. Gorse Coalition is fast and furious right now. We had, today was the first of. A number of Zoom meetings with members of various legislators, senators and house members. And it was with Senator Hobbs's staff today. And they last about twenty minutes and then we're on to the next one, so there's a bunch of them planned. Over the next couple of weeks, educating folks on the importance of Gorst. Talked about the retreat. The docking station in the cubicle that you previously, we. You know, you guys used to print and to dock your, I've got another, every every time we need a docking station. The one for the council members gets stolen and put somewhere borrowed, sorry, and so that's been replaced again. So if you need to come in and I know the wireless printing works, but there's a monitor, a mouse and. The docking station that your services will plug in if you need to do some printing in that in that cubicle. It's all functional, so I want to ask you, so this last year and I and for sure this spring too. We've suspended our, we have historically have had a a fall and the spring and fall cleanup. In our community and we get, we're getting phone calls about that and whether we intend to resume that. And I will say it takes two full weeks of staff time to complete that process and pick up. Those items throughout our city and our staff is not doing other functions in the city. But if it is important that we do that, we need to adopt a policy, what we've learned. When when we stop doing this is that we've been doing it for a number of years without a policy and. I've talked to our city attorney and there are other, there is examples of policy that we can put into place. But if we're going to do this, I think we we should start working on that policy so we can have it in place and the components. So that we can potentially do that this fall is is what I would propose, so Councilor Clausen.
I totally support restarting that program as soon as we can. I think this is a. It's obviously well received by the citizens, otherwise we wouldn't be busy for two weeks, so. Not to mention, this is a great opportunity for the city to just freshen up. So I totally support as soon as we can re-implementing it.
Okay, I would say, just so we may be getting some further dialogue, add this to our little little work study. Coming up, I would just like to better understand, you know, things have changed so much and I just want to make sure that. We have the the necessary resources to fulfill something like this and just kind of talk about it as a council and make sure this is a priority that we want to continue moving forward. And I think it deserves more conversation.
So and I know.
At our planning session.
The retreat or just a work study item?
At the retreat, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. We can, we can add that to a retreat. The. I know that. Public Works plans on tightening it up a lot. We get a lot of things that picking, you know, getting dumped that we simply are, people haven't paid, you know. There are items like mattresses, furniture, appliances that you have to pay for. And we'll have, we've we've developed a tag system and you need to come to city hall to pay for that. Well, we're not open right now, so. You know, we got to, you know, get a little farther down the road in this COVID thing before we can even consider this, but. I'm happy to to bring this forward and and talk about it some more with you guys, so. All right. I I I attended last week and I think council member Ashby did also a briefing with the Navy and a demonstration. You know, the the Navy SEALs that are based in Hawaii come to Washington for two months a year to train. And the waters in the Puget Sound are. Aren't clear like they are in Hawaii and and it's a, it's a great training ground and. Then they've been working for eight years to to obtain the necessary permits. To utilize some of our state parks and I just found out, found some of the. The the processes just appalls me a little bit when I, when I was briefed on this, so I think they're close. They utilize a number of naval bases around here, but their their mission, you know, and these these four and six man teams is never to be seen. They're they, you know, they infiltrate, they observe and so if if you saw them in a state park somewhere, then they failed. So it was very interesting, I don't know, what were your takeaways, Councilmember Ashby?
My takeaways. I was. Very, very impressed with the intelligence of the. The men that are doing this and I, all I saw were men. They were very intelligent, they were very committed, they were dedicated to their mission, they. Many of the missions they go on, the way they're transported. It's in a very confined area and they have to squeeze their buddy. Every fifteen minutes to make sure that he's still alive, so when you think that you have a dangerous job. These, these people are really working on our behalf and I, like I said, they were intelligent, they were confident. I was very proud of them and I was very glad that I had an opportunity to experience some of the, some of the conditions that they work in.
It was interesting. I've been talking, I talked, matter of fact, a citizen today about particular landlords are being. Impacted by the governor's order that their tenants don't have, there's the eviction moratorium and. Folks, many people aren't paying their 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 rents and as a result. People that have these properties still have to make their mortgage payment and their utility payments and some are falling behind on their utility payments. And I I talked to one, somebody owns a property. Today and their concern is the moment that the moratorium, you know, as soon as they start collecting their rents, they can start making payments. To us again, but this particular person was five thousand dollars in arrears on their utility payments and. You know. Very concerned that when the moratorium is lit, all of a sudden, we're going to start charging ten percent. very concerned that when the moratorium is lit, all of a sudden, we're going to start charging 10% late charges on that and it'll start compounding and making the matter, matter worse for them. And Noah and I talked about that today. And we have provisions in our policies provided that these property owners communicate with us, set up payment arrangements that those wait late charges can be waived and we, and we, the last thing we want to do is you know, turn the water off on a, on a house, a duplex or a triplex and, and make, make it uninhabitable for, for folks. So it is just imperative that, I just want to get the word out. As these problems arise, make sure you contact our utility department, discuss payment arrangements. We're here to work with you. We, we want to help and we can't, you know, you need to, you have to pay the water and utility bills. But we have some latitude with the late charges if we have payment arrangements and you're, and you're, and you're fulfilling your obligations with us. And then just a little Facebook fact that Janine shared with me in the, in our meeting here. So our last city council meeting on February 23rd. Since that meeting, 181 people have gone and viewed our council meeting that we had on the 23rd. The last time we had 180 people in the council meeting room, I think it was because we were talking about utility rates. I don't think our meeting room holds that many, but sometimes it seems like that. But that's, that's really cool that we're reaching that many people with this new technology that we're using. I guess it's not that new, but COVID has made it new for us. So with that, I will go to staff reports. Let's see here, Mr. Vaughn, do you have anything to share?
I just wanted to give the city council a heads up that in your packet for the work study meeting is going to be a lengthy document. It's the countywide planning policies that we'll be reviewing at the meeting next week. I'm going to email that to you in advance of the packet going out so that you can get a head start on it because it is a, a long read. And the, just a little background on this project, the city is going to be asked to ratify the countywide planning policies probably in the next 10 to 12 months. Is that correct? Councilmember Ashby?
Yes, we anticipate the county has by RCW 90 days to ratify it. And if we get it to them in June, they should have their work complete by September and then it would go to the cities in September.
Right. So the important thing here is that the land use technical advisory committee and the transportation technical advisory committee are working on the revisions to the countywide planning policies to make them consistent with Vision 2050. And so when this comes to you for a vote, there isn't going to be an opportunity to change it later. It, it's now is the time to provide your input so that all of the jurisdictions in Kitsap County can agree on what form this document should take. And then it will spend some time going through a process and then it'll come back to you at the very end for, for a yes or no vote on the final document. So you'll see that from me soon and we'll talk about it next week.
Nick, I recall from the last draft that it is a lengthy read. If you could also point out those key elements that we should pay most attention to, I think that would be helpful.
That'll definitely be in my staff report, but I haven't finished it yet. So I'll at least let you skim through it first and then the staff report will have that information.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Tony Lang with, okay, thank you. I see Tony Lang with us tonight. Do you have anything to share from the Public Works Department?
No. It's been a while. Obviously COVID put a wrench in me attending these. So it's good to see everybody.
We're happy to see your deck. Mr. Dorsey?
I have nothing.
You have nothing. Chief Brown?
Not a whole lot. Just give you guys an update on accreditation. We're about 75% done. We've got a few things that are still going to take a little bit of time, but we've, we've done some good work. The people downstairs has done a lot of good work. So I appreciate the ongoing support and so do they. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Ms. Archer?
Nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
Okay. And the clerk's office, Brandy Reinersen?
Good evening, Council Mayor. I have nothing to report either.
Well, with that, we are to our second citizen comment period. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the city council? Use the raise your hand feature. And Clerk Reinersen will bring you into the meeting.
So I have three members of the public, including Fire Chief Fawcett. And at this point, nobody has raised their hand.
I'm sure Chief Fawcett has something to share with us. Guess not. All right. Well, if no one is wishing to address the council, it is time to adjourn our meeting. It's kind of nice to get done well before nine o'clock for a change. So Councilmember Clausen, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, just, just, I was, you know, obviously I've looked at city council agendas a few times. And I just noticed that at the bottom of our agenda, we have city council good of the order. Unfortunately, it's after the item that is the adjournment.
Yeah.
So I guess we don't necessarily get an opportunity other than the formal reports, but it's just an observation.
Maybe we need to move that up in the agenda.
Maybe we should move it up just before adjournment would be reasonable.
Maybe even ahead of citizen comments. So we, so with that, is there good of the order? Councilmember Lucarelli is raising her hand. She's
Yes. Every time you move your head, I see the flagpole on city hall.
Yeah.
And I'm just letting you know that the light does not reach the flag. So there's a light that's kind of pointing down and the flag on the flagpole unfortunately is not lit, just, just information. That's all.
Okay. Tony Lang happens to be on the call. I'm sure they'll be out there in the morning. Last time somebody let me know that it actually wasn't the light that somebody had because that is battery, it's solar powered. Someone had stolen the battery out of it. So hopefully that isn't the case and the lens just needs to be cleaned or adjusted or something on it, but it does work properly when all the pieces are there. Other, other goods of the order. Tony's got a pen and paper. He's, he's ready to write them all down. All right. Hearing none, our meeting this evening is adjourned.
Night, everybody.